I'd like to call the February 11th, 2016 Public Works Session to order. At this time, I'd like for you to stand for a moment of silence. It would be followed by the pledge of allegiance by Mr. Bridgewater. Mr. Bridgewater.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. You may be seated. Mission statement by Mr. Bridgewater.
The mission of Fort Smith Public Schools is to challenge minds, challenge the bodies, and challenge the dreams of all students by focusing on excellence.
Thank you, Mr. Bridgewater. Madam Clerk, my tenants.
Mr. Bridgewater.
Here.
Reverend Fleming.
Present.
Mrs. Hines.
Present.
Mr. Lamb.
Present.
Mr. Nance.
Here.
Reverend Patillo.
Here.
Mrs. Williams.
Here.
Mr. Parent.
Here.
Eight members present, one member absent. Dr. Whitaker is attending her daughter's conference track meeting.
Okay. Thank you, Madam Clerk. 2.6, the approval of the agenda. I would like to amend the agenda to include 2.7 to call the board into a closed session.
Motion for approval.
Second.
Motion's been properly made. Madam Clerk, roll call vote.
Mr. Bridgewater.
Yes.
Reverend Fleming.
Yes.
Mrs. Hines.
Yes.
Mr. Lamb.
Yes.
Mr. Nance.
Yes.
Reverend Patillo.
Yes.
Mrs. Williams.
Yes.
Mr. Parent.
Yes.
Is unanimous.
At this time, I've asked Vice Chair Williams to call us into closed session.
I move that the board enter to a closed meeting under the provisions of Section 2.2-3711 of the Code of Virginia for the following purposes. One, consultation with legal counsel concerning a legal matter requiring the advice of such counsel as permitted under subsection A.7. Two, consideration of various personnel matters including the assignment, performance, resignation of specific school employees as permitted under subsection A.1 and 3. Discussion of a student disciplinary matter as permitted under subsection A.2.
Second.
Motion's been made.
And second.
Second. Madam Clerk.
Mr. Bridgewater.
Yes.
Reverend Fleming.
Yes.
Mrs. Hines.
Yes.
Mr. Lamb.
Yes.
Mr. Nance.
Yes.
Reverend Patillo.
Yes.
Mrs. Williams.
Yes.
Mr. Parent.
Yes.
Is unanimous.
Excuse me.
Chairman, Parent, does this then mean that 3.15 closed session would be taken off the agenda?
Oh, yes.
Thank you. Thank you for that. 3.1, yes. I forgot. We've amended the agenda. We've taken off 3.15. We're just moving it up. Thank you.
All right. Motion, the second. All right. Roll call. Mr. Fleming.
Yes.
Mr. Lamb.
Yes.
Mr. Nance.
Yes.
Mr. Bridgewater.
Yes.
Reverend Patillo.
Yes.
Mrs. Hines.
Yes.
Mrs. Williams.
Yes.
Mr. Parent.
Yes.
All right. Well, we got through that.
The first part.
The first part. Look, we are. Yeah.
Wow, do we get to watch Scandal?
The next item on the agenda is the recognition of the SBA School Board Clerk Appreciation Week, February 15th through the 19th. You know, this is a good part of what we get to do. And our vice chair, I will make a presentation. Mrs. Chambers, would you please come up here? We'll try to get to you, but. Certificate of appreciation, Kathy Chambers. In honor of your dedication and hard work for public education and your continued services to students, this is School Board Clerk Appreciation Week, signed by Gina Patterson and myself. Thank you for all you do to help us. Thank you. Mrs. Stewart. Certificate of appreciation to you, Brenda Stewart, in honor of your dedication and hard work for public education and your continued service to students. And this is signed also by our executive director of the SBA and myself, the school board chairman. Thank you for all that you do. We appreciate you.
Oh, you're welcome.
Last but not least, Ms. Patterson, would you please come up here? We just want to show, the board wants to show its appreciation to you for all the things that you do to make this job a lot easier. God bless you. Thank you. All right. Agenda, item 3.2. Now, I must apologize that the last board meeting, our P.O. officer, I mean, I watched the presentation. She did an awesome job rehearsing, and then we didn't get a chance to allow her to make a presentation. So, without further ado, I guess we're gonna have to move.
Yeah. Thank you for that introduction. Good evening, everyone.
Well, it's more of an apology, but now we get to see the fruit of your hard work.
Yeah. So, everyone knows I started in September, and one of the key objectives was to redesign and kind of update our website. I had heard feedback from lots of different people that our website was kind of outdated. Same photography, same type of content. So, since then, we have been updating the website weekly with new photos and things like that. But, we looked at the website and found that it was a little bit outdated in its style, and so we wanted to redesign the website. And I worked with the IT department, as well as several other different departments across the division. This has touched everyone in reference to content and the look and feel. And so, we did a lot of extensive research on design nationally, as well as locally, for what features we liked best about different websites. And we started in November with Sharp School, which is our website hoster. And initially, we were talking about just doing a template changeover. So, we were like, okay, we'll just pick a template that you already have standard, quickly refresh the look, and move on from there. But, when we talked to them, they told us we had a redesigned custom in our contract for free, already paid for as part of our contract. So, we decided to create something that we truly love. So, we, as you can see, we started November 1st, so it's a very accelerated process. Usually, when you redesign something of this magnitude, it's about half a year to a year that you do that. You don't really just switch it over. So, with that in mind, we assessed the website analytics, and our focus was on the top key places that people visited, to really give those pages some extra love, and then also work on the other pages to kind of update the content. We held lots of different workshops with different departments to kind of go over their content, and I kept on reinforcing to them, we really want people to be on a straight flight to Tahiti and not have to make so many stops. We just want to give people the information they need right away, not make it so hard. So, user-friendly was one of our missions with redesigning the website, and we did simple and built around excellent photography. And one thing you'll notice is, when I switch over to the new site, it is responsive on any device. So, on your tablet, your phone, you will have that capability, and that was very important to us, since lots of our traffic comes from mobile. So, without further ado, this is our new homepage. Woohoo! So, part of assessing the analytics is that we did the parent and student portal. That was one of our top hits. So, we added that to the top, so you don't have to search for it anymore, make it really easy. Staff email was also one of the priorities.
Oh, thank the Lord.
Yes. And job opportunities was also a top hit. So, the top five, those are the top five. Your select the school still happens. Oh, that doesn't happen. They're still working on it. You have your languages here. So, this is our homepage. This is completely responsive, so on any device, it's gonna shrink or expand. If you scroll down, we have our quick links here, which slide, so people can easily find. And this was also custom designed based on our traffic. We really wanted people to access what they needed right up front and center. Our events was one of our key places, top three that people visited, as well as communication survey. We just concluded the events was something that was most important to people. So, we gave that space and some extra love as well. And if you scroll down, the recent news, if you look at our previous website, if you remember, it was all the way at the bottom. So, it's hard to see, and this is really where we tell our story. So, you can look and see this space here. And so, if you read more, it clicks through, and so this feeds just our recent stuff, so you don't have to scroll all the way to the bottom. This pane here, this feature video, this is what I call our flexible pane, so we added this last minute. Initially, when we were designing this, we didn't have this portion, but when we have a feature video, we'll populate this space, and when we don't, this frame and this frame will just be minimized. So, we have the flexibility to target. So, that way, you don't have a video that's three months old, still playing, and it's like, oh, I already saw that. If you scroll down, you have our Facebook and our Twitter feeds here. And then, this area here is also one of my favorites, because it allows you to feature -- this language here is completely flexible. So, if we do a strategic plan, for example, and you wanted to have all this information dedicated to strategic planning, you could. Anything you'd want to put there, that's like our highlight pane, and then that's the end. So, that's our homepage. So, the pages that I talked about, we put extra love to. It was our resources, human resources page, because this was high traffic. So, you see, they have a different feature with this scrolling, and this allows us to showcase who we are. If you scroll down, we have our information section here, and this is something that we kind of implemented across the board, with people having an introduction to their department or to their program, so that people really know who they are. And then, a major improvement here is the job opportunities. We put that front and center, so you can see the administrator positions, support, open certified, and then having the pictures here, like this video would play. If you're a prospective applicant, you can see exactly who we are. I'm sorry. So, that just shows you from an applicant, they can really see who we are, and that might encourage more people to come and work with us. The school board page, this page is just a standard page, so this picture here, this will be the standard photo across all of the pages that you see, and this page will help us push to update our content. Like, once a month, we'll switch out this picture, so that it still looks fresh. And this is a spelling bee photo at West Haven Elementary that we took. So, your information will be here, and on this side pane here, where you see the blue, all your information will be there. It's still in the process of being connected over. And one thing I wanted to show you guys is, other school divisions have like a group shot. So, Mr. Nance reviewed the website on Tuesday, and he noted that this really says team. So, this was one suggestion for you to kind of take a group picture. It could be here, when everyone's together in your regular clothes, and kind of take a group shot, and then that could be your landing page, and you would still have your individual pages as well.
We could do that on the 25th.
Sure.
If there's no objection.
She is capable to do it anytime.
Yeah. With all the board.
If we're in a forum where we're visiting a building, she can do it. It's great.
Right. Good.
Yes. Do I have to say my closing?
That's fine.
Okay. So, the other page that had high traffic was the school menu. So, this also has this feature where it's scrolling through. If you scroll down, you can see the meal prices, helpful links, resources. We really organize the pages to be as user-friendly as possible, just letting people know, hey, here's where you can get all the information you need. And if you scroll here, like you can see how it has the drop-down of the programs. Another new feature is we added frequently asked questions to help reduce the phone calls that they get, asking the same questions over and over. So, we really wanted people to, as far as the departments and parents, know that, hey, all this information is available online and kind of directs them. Another page would be our career and technical. This is where we put a lot of love into this area. And one thing we didn't have before is, we didn't have First College on our page. So, now, we have First College, and if you scroll down, our dual enrollment, our career fair, contact us courses, all of that information is now front and center, as well as the great photography, so that people can really see what you're getting. And this culinary picture, we took that yesterday for people to see, like, this is what I call our meat and potatoes, where people can see all the extra stuff happening.
All right. Can you cover down on the right, where the single point of contact in each school for those programs?
Oh, yes.
Instead of just generic?
Oh, yes. So, great point. Under contact us, we had language before that was like, all of the school guidance counselors can assist you, but really, you want to talk to this person, and so we simplified that language, like, hey, here are the heavy hitters that you need to contact to get the information you need, rather than talking around it. And so, we identified them. If you click on it, it will open up their email. You can email them directly saying, hey, I'm interested in this program. How can I sign up? The music education page, this is just an example of a regular page that will be redesigned for a department, and we're still -- ooh, that was the email. We're still working on updating everyone's content. Like I said before, we just focused on getting the large places that we knew people were going, and kind of fixing that first, like improving it. And then, but this is an example of how the pages will be laid out. So, putting front and center, a bio, the levels of instruction, the objectives, everything like that. And all of the different departments, really, they take ownership over their pages. So, we think by launching this, they will take extra ownership. I want to make my page look really great.
Right.
So, another, the last thing I want to show you is our newsroom. This is a feature we haven't had before. So, that shows us our news coverage, and if you scroll down, our news releases are here, our school news, which stems from the front, where you saw our recent news. So, like, this information here would fall under this area, and contact information, and as well as our official social media sites. And if you click on our photo gallery, this is an additional new incentive. So, this was the only thing we paid for, paid 160 bucks for the whole year.
Wow.
Yeah.
Break the bank.
You can't beat it. So, this is really fabulous, because the front of our website, everybody wants, shares, sends me pictures and shares what's happening, and that, everything, this allows it to have a second shelf life. And so, by including this information, this will let people be able to see their pictures a little bit longer than just being on the front of the website, and then they're being recycled. And to close, one of the things that we did in the last month or so is host a, like, staff development workshop with the television station, and this was the product of the person who came and did, like, the workshop. And this is a testament of the direction that we want to go in, and this month, I will have six more of these types of videos done. And the goal is that we put these videos together, and we can go and present to the community who we really are about. Yes. And use it for recruiting.
subjects that she's teaching, the Christopher Columbus songs, and especially the ones with all the continents. We recently had an SOL night where the students, they actually challenged me to a matching game with the continents, and so we were battling against one another, and they're singing a song as they're going along, and I'm struggling to get the continents matching with the names.
Actually, when they learn through songs and games, they kind of don't realize how much they are learning. Like we said before, students really enjoy playing games, and they enjoy songs. So, when you incorporate that with the learning process, it's a win-win situation.
I think this classroom is a model of what we're looking to do here at Brighton Elementary School, and what we're looking to do across Fort Smith Public Schools. We want students to be engaged. We want to see technology being used by students. We want to see true collaboration amongst students, where they're helping each other to learn and push each other forward. We want to see teachers as facilitators, which Ms. Hargit did an excellent job of that. And we want to see different, just different ways that our students are learning from one another, not just one specific thing, where there's, say, a lecture at the front, and the students are just taking notes. Active learning is the key, having teachers that are willing to embrace this and willing to learn and continue to grow themselves as professionals. That's what it's all about. Because the bottom line is really helping their kids in the long run, so they can move themselves forward, and they understand what they're learning on a daily basis.
That's very good. Very good job.
Okay. That concludes my presentation.
It's very good.
Does anyone have any questions?
Excellent.
I had one, I'm sorry.
Oh.
On the, can you go back to the homepage, please, ma'am? And this is more of a manage, I'm just wondering who's managing the upcoming events that you have there? Are those dates being pulled in from schools' webpages to populate this, or is there somebody that's having to manage that piece of the, because that in itself is a beast?
Yeah. So, great question. So, the individual schools, they update their own calendar. When there is a larger event, they send it to me or the IT department, and we put it on the district calendar. We do that because when we put it on the district calendar, there is a feed that hits all of the other school calendars. So, for example, we put one time something very central to one school, and then you have another school calling, saying, why is Woodrow Wilson's event on my Churchman Academy's calendar? So, that's the way we do it when it's a larger event that hits, that we really want everyone to know about. They send it to us, and we populate it here. And that's how it really works on our end. The other important thing to note is that functionality-wise, the website remains the same. Everything we did was cosmetic, so from a user perspective, then managing everything, it remains the same. So, that was one question people had, was, does this affect how I manage this ministry?
I just wanted to say that in end-up reviewing of the website on Tuesday, this website now gets information to people quicker and keeps their attention longer, because if we have a 23-year-old prospective teacher, they may be pulling up a host of websites. And what she's done and Dean has done is, they've cut down steps to get to the meat and potatoes. One other important point I want to bring up is, this further indicates Dr. Bracy's commitment to rebranding of the school division, which was one of his prime targets, if you'll recall his calendar. And I certainly applaud him for that, because he's gone out and gotten the best and the brightest, and he's done a great job. And I love the white space, the photography. That video was, we've never seen a video like that in Fort Smith Public Schools, okay? So, phenomenal things are happening, and it's not the same old, same old people are seeing. Tomorrow, when it rolls out, it's gonna be different. And if there's an inclement weather issue tomorrow, it's almost gonna happen.
So.
Might be. Who knows?
This is my board report, by the way.
One of the new features, especially using Sharp School, is that a box will pop up when we have inclement weather. So, it'll be more user-friendly, and as soon as somebody hits our site, it's gonna sit there, and then when they X-out, this pane here, just like how on our current site, right under the banner, that's where the information will lie. It'll still be the white space with the red, just like you see now. So, people will be still accustomed to seeing the same thing, but that box will be that extra indicator, like, hey, something's different.
How long does it take you to do that?
Oh, it improves our efficiency, because the current way that we update the website typically from home, at whatever hour, is kind of cumbersome. And so, this streamlines our process and makes it much easier on my end and on Dean's folks' end. And so, that's really the goal, is making it easier for us and also easier for people to engage.
Almost instantaneous.
Yeah. Oh, it definitely instantaneous.
So, does Mr. Wiggins, are you gonna call me at 5:00 in the morning? Am I gonna get the rub off? Call at 5:00.
Come on, J-Dub.
That won't replace this. Who is on the phone at 5:00 in the morning?
Come on, J-Dub. Facebook lights up, ma'am.
Good job.
They call J-Dub.
So, in actuality, we have to close early tomorrow. When you all make that decision, it will hit here, because we get all these requests on Facebook. Now, we can tell them to go to the website.
Website.
It will be there before anywhere.
It's gonna hit our Facebook and our Twitter, too, at the same time. Oh, it's.
The goal is really to update our Facebook, our Twitter, and our website at the same time. And initially, the lag in our website was the process. We would usually run into it, because it's not something that we have consistently up here, where we could just quickly edit. It's a portlet that we have to make live, and it's.
So, now?
Yeah. Now, it'll be easier, yes.
Please, Ms. Flutter, you.
Yes.
You do a very good job, because my phone goes, it's like it's split. I'm getting updates all the time.
Thank you.
You're keeping us informed. So, it's not that we don't, we don't know. We do know. Very good. Excellent. Excellent job.
Dr. Bracy, all right. Wonderful job. I love it. I love the fact that it's clean and crisp. It's fresh. The colors are very inviting. They're very right now, and I can't wait to hit it with something that is mobile, because then I don't have to hit folder after folder after folder after folder to find something. So, I think it's right on the money. It's right exactly what we needed. It falls in line with everything else, like Mr. Nance said, that we're contemporizing, we're coming up, and keeping it fresh. So, I like it. Good job. Thank you very much.
Thank you. And this site, I will leave you with, should last quite a long time. When we met with Dean initially, he said, we just redid it two years ago. I'm like, really? It's a little bit more dated than that.
But this is really HD quality. I mean, this is really the what we've had.
The photos are all ours. There's no stock photos.
No stock photos.
Okay.
That's important.
The school nutrition, that's the only place where you have stock photos. The other photos I took myself, within the last six months.
Good job.
So, all the photos are unique to us, besides this.
Thank you very much.
Good job. Thank you. Moving right along, the next item on the agenda is 3.3, discussion, school board student representative, and I'm asking Vice Chair Williams if she would lead that discussion. Thank you.
Okay. At the last meeting, we discussed and brought up for your consideration of school board representative, one of the students from the high school. And I had spoken with Chairman Rodney Jordan from Norfolk, and he sent us their policy and their form and whatever. And I think I emailed it to everyone. I hope you all got it, had a chance to look it over, to see what you all think, if you have any feedback. And then, after we get your input, I think Dr. Bracy and Mr. Parent and I are gonna draft the policy for Fort Smith. So, if you've read it, it was really, theirs is very simple, very clear. I liked it. It wasn't a whole lot of reinventing the wheel. And if you all like that idea, or you want to add something, because they basically select a rising senior. It's a one-year term, and the principals really make the recommendation to the superintendent. And I think it was like maybe three people they recommend, and Dr. Bracy would interview them, and then he would make the recommendation to the board, and I guess we would go from there. In Norfolk, they do not attend closed meetings. They are not privy In Norfolk, they do not attend closed meetings, they are not privy to any of the confidential information on students or personnel, which I like that. And they serve a one-year term. I think it's a good idea because then we get a perspective from the students on what, what, you know, we would like to hear what we can do to improve school for them. And so, what do, what, do you all have any comments?
Mr. Nance and then Mr. Bridgewater.
I think it's a great idea because another added caveat that we have, being a member of VSBA, is that individual will qualify for a scholarship opportunity as well. If you remember at the beginning of the conference in November, I believe the student rep from Winchester won. And another thing, in our involvement with Cube, French Georgia County, Maryland, brought their student rep to Cube. And we've seen him grow. He became a school board member and became a member of Cube and now he's graduated from college. And he's involved in education and involved in Cube at another level. So, it's a fantastic idea.
Thank you. Mr. Bridgewater and then Mrs. Hines.
The only thing I had, and maybe it's a good idea just to do it for one year, for the first year to find out if there's a, there's a learning process and if you really get somebody that's going to get into it. Your first couple of meetings, the kids, it's just like a board, you haven't said too much unless you already know what's going on because it's learning. So, you might want to consider a two-year process. But every two years, you've got an election going on, so...
It's a rising senior now.
Right. That's true. So, you're only giving one year. So, I'm just, I'm just saying, it's a, it's a learning process and you only talk about 12, 12 meetings, really, 12, 14 meetings.
But I think it's more for us to also learn and hear from them, you know, what we can do to help improve the schools. But I don't, I'm not sure if they, they want to learn anything from us about the board process. But it really is to try to engage the students.
Right. Mrs. Hines and then Reverend Patel.
Thank you, excuse me. I love the idea. I would, I would try to add, or I would, I would suggest to the, to the group that's putting this together and maybe to Dr. Bracy, to almost make it a rotation of schools so that we have, you know, we've got three high schools and, you know, maybe, because it just says in here that the student representative will serve one term and the student representative is subject to final approval by the school board. And I think with the three high schools, I think somehow putting them on a rotational basis, granted, we can always make it open for applicants from all the schools if we have, if there's really nobody at that school that is interested in doing it. But it looks great on their college resumes as well. Like Mr. Nance said, it is scholarship money for them as well. And I think, I think we'll be surprised by what they bring and the insights that they give. And I think we might have somebody that is interested in this, you know, you get those civic-minded kids, you know, let's, let's get them engaged and excited early. So, Ms. Williams, thank you for bringing this. I'm excited, I'm sorry, I'm sniffling, but I'm excited for this and I think maybe we just give them a mentor on the board that they can ask questions to, to get them acclimated quicker so that they kind of know the pace of what's going on at that. So, I would just, I would like to see if we can't do it on a rotational basis so that way we can make sure everybody is, is covered. The other thing, too, I think when they go to the building, what can they do with this in the building? You know, should they be talking? What can we give them to take back to their building to start those discussions with the other student bodies so that it is truly everybody's voice being heard and not just one person's voice? But thank you very much, I'm excited.
Thank you. Reverend Patel.
Yeah, I have similar ideas as Ms. Hines. I think it was a great program and I was thinking maybe we could have maybe like Mr. Wiggins or someone serve as a liaison to that student board member so that he can make sure the board actually has comments on what we're going to be discussing at the next board meeting from a youth perspective so they don't feel on the spot when we bring things up in the meeting. He can already be, he or she can already be prepared with what to present on that night. So, I think having liaison would be a great idea for them.
Any other comments from board? Reverend Fleming?
In, just in light of both board member, Hines and Reverend Patel, I, I think it would be, I think it would be decent to have two instead of one.
So, that's your suggestion, okay? And just to let you know, Mr. Meekins, this was sent out this afternoon, you have samples from Alexandra Public Schools, the Hampton Public Schools and...
What news?
New good news, yeah. So, you have, you have samples, so board members, do your homework, look at this, give Vice Chair Williams some feedback so that, we would like for this to be on the March agenda. So, it's not something that we want to prolong. We'd like your feedback as soon as possible so that we could draft a policy for you. Reverend Patel.
I just want to piggyback Reverend Fleming, I agree with that. I would, just my personal perspective, I prefer to have two rather than alternate high schools. I think we should leave it open to everyone to apply and just have two that we select every year rather than just, so we have to have one from each high school each year.
Okay.
But that's just my perspective, but it's a great idea, though.
Thank you for your suggestion. Any other suggestions? Just be sure that you get your suggestions to Mrs. Williams so that we can move forward with this. Did you want to say something? Okay. Dr. Bracy?
Also, in looking at the criteria as far as who the student may be, it's going to be a rising senior, then possibly looking at the senior class president as a, as a possibility. I would, sometimes your, sometimes your, your student body president, not necessarily seniors. But I guess if you're trying to narrow the focus of, I'm looking at those who will, who will apply, don't want to limit it.
He's saying a senior president.
And I, because I know the flip side of that, they're already involved in activities and so forth, so don't close it out for others that may be interested in this.
And I was going to say that, yeah, when you're a student body president or a senior president, you already have...
Going on.
And it should be, I mean, average student, it shouldn't have anything to do with GPA.
Right.
Shouldn't have anything to do with status in the building.
But I do think that we do want the recommendations to come from the school principal.
Yes.
Yes.
We certainly don't want it to be basically GPA, but we don't want anybody coming here to start the rioting in the middle of the board meeting. So, yeah. So, yeah, we do want the recommendations from, the guidelines from the principal.
Any other, just, any other comments? Just get your suggestions to Mrs. Williams as soon as possible and Dr. Bracy, Ms. Williams and I will draft a policy and, and present it to you in March, okay? Next item on the agenda, as discussed at the last meeting, is a change of location for the April 21st, 2016 and the October 20th, 2016 school board meetings. The April 21st meeting, we've confirmed if the board, with the board approval, of course, that would be at IC Norfolk High School. And the October 20th meeting would be at Churchland High School. In looking, in looking at the board evaluation, one of the things that, that I shared with you is that we had comments from board members that we, we need more input from, from the public. And this is a great way of us taking our meeting to the public and allowing them to, you know, discuss non-agenda items and agenda items. Let them be very involved in, in the process. Instead of having to come to us, we're going to go to them. So, this is a roll call vote. If there's any discussion, but if you have any questions, that's, that's the purpose. I think we talked about it the last board meeting and we wanted to put it on the agenda for us to vote so that we vote for it tonight and we can move forward, so.
Okay. Move for approval?
Motion made in second. Roll call vote. Madam Clerk?
Any discussion?
Any discussion, I'm sorry, yeah.
Question, thank you Chairman Parent. I'm all, like I said last time, we talked about this, I'm excited for this to happen. I would like to see if it's available, when we do go out to the schools for these meetings, to look at their ROTC programs, to, to bring colors and to do the pledge. If they have, I'm sure their choruses or their choirs would be available, maybe we can get a national anthem since it is a different setting, you know, to kind of show off. We're in their house, let them show off a little bit.
Right.
And if there's any, you know, special program to highlight instead of the school statement that month, that would be the school statement that they would do and give them an opportunity to highlight and to talk about things that go on within their schools. So, I think, too, this is a way to highlight what's going on in our schools and, you know, the programs that we do have. And so, I would like, I will vote for it if we can try our best to get all those pieces in place, just so it is, you know, showing off.
Right. Reverend Fleming?
And I do want to say this, when you take it to the community, it has to be family-friendly. You cannot, we cannot be in there giving these long speeches and doing a lot of talking. It has to be a short agenda because parents have to get up and go to work. And if they see that we are going to be in there for two and three hours...
Right.
It's going to defeat the purpose of us going into the community because they're not going to want to come back...
Right.
...the next time we do it.
Right.
So, I think that our agenda is going to really have to be limited and we are going to have to be mindful that it's a family-friendly meeting and you want to realize that people do go to work...
Right.
...the next day.
Right.
And even students, you may, you, if it's, if it's short enough, students may come.
Right. Okay? Any other, any other discussion? Now, Madam Clerk, roll call vote.
Mr. Bridgewater?
Yes.
Reverend Fleming?
Yes.
Mrs. Hines?
Yes.
Mr. Lamb?
Yes.
Mr. Nance?
Yes.
Reverend Patel?
Yes.
Mrs. Williams?
Yes.
Mr. Parent?
Yes.
Ms. Janamus?
Thank you. Yes.
And, Ms. Hines, Mr. Wiggins, as I can see, he already took those notes down, so we will follow up and give him early notice of the programs that we would like to see highlighted at the school.
Mr. Wiggins?
Following direction of the board, the school schedule to do it for April will be...
Norcom. Norcom. And she's already confirmed and they've, both schools have confirmed a yes.
No, I'm sorry. We've already told, we already have a school. So, what we'll now do, we will simply take the school who is scheduled to do it for April and let them do it later. And since we had Norcom, get Norcom to do the statement and all.
That's a good, good point.
Well, that's a good point.
Good point.
Okay. All right?
Exactly.
Okay. All right. Next item, roll call vote, mobile device policy. Dr. Bracy?
Okay.
We've already...
You've all, you've had the overview at the, at the last meeting in terms of the mobile device policy that, that we want to have in place with the implementation of the mobile laptops, the Chromebooks at the high school. We wanted to make sure that we had a policy in place. And Dean briefed you on that at the last meeting, so unless there are any other questions, it's ready for vote.
And before we move to the motion, I do want to say that IT already did an initial test run of the Chromebooks at Wilson High School this week.
It was, it was yesterday.
Yesterday. And it went, it's lined up.
Oh, that's great.
So, I'm very confident.
So, is there a motion?
Move for approval?
Motion made in second. Roll call vote. Madam Clerk?
Mr. Bridgewater?
Yes.
Reverend Fleming?
Yes.
Mrs. Hines?
Yes.
Mr. Lamb?
Yes.
Mr. Nance?
Yes.
Reverend Patel?
Yes.
Mrs. Williams?
Yes.
Mr. Parent?
Yes.
Ms. Janamus?
Thank you. Next item on the agenda is 3.6, Discussion, Professional Learning Strategic Plan. Dr. Bracy?
Thank you, Chairman Parent. You want to know one of the things that we discussed is the, the need for a division strategic plan. We want, first, we want to update the plan that we currently have. As we look at it, it's not, the alignment that needs to be there is not, as we look at that as being the roadmap for us to improve the division. So, with that being said, we realize that we have to do some extensive work to actually put a plan of this magnitude in place. So, with that, I've asked Dr. Taylor to do the groundwork in order to get this started. And once we get everything with the foundation in place, board members, community members, administrators, the parents, students, will all be involved in this process because it's going to take everybody's input in order to come up with a strategic plan for the division that will work. It has to be buy-in by all parties. It can't just be something that, that my office puts together or the board just comes up with. We got to have input on, by all levels. So, with that being said, I'll yield to Dr. Taylor to give an overview of where we are from the professional development that we are looking at in the process.
As part of Dr. Bracy's division-wide strategic plan, as he stated, we are beginning to put some measures in place. We have a consultant who will be facilitating that process with Dr. Bracy for the division-wide plan. But in our efforts to begin the process, we held a five-day boot camp with Edivate, which is a company that we currently contract with to provide professional learning so that we could draft out a professional learning strategic plan in preparation for our division-wide strategic plan. I've given some copies of the drafts that came out of that boot camp, which was a phenomenal experience for five members of the curriculum and instruction team. We met off-site at the ALOFT and the Residence Inn in Chesapeake for two and a half days. It was very intense, it was a lot of work, but we walked away, as you can see, with some, with some pieces in place that can help us to move forward in this process. The most exciting part of this is that we did develop a vision statement for professional learning. This whole process is being driven, of course, by Dr. Bracy's strategic plan, but also understanding that we need guidance and structure in the way that we provide professional learning and professional development to our staff and how we map out that professional learning. It needs to be very focused and it needs to be purposeful. And it needs to be a professional learning vision that will enable us to sustain the learning and the changes that come about because of it. Portsmouth Public Schools will provide relevant and purposeful professional learning to develop collaborative and reflective practitioners and foster a culture of academic excellence and responsible citizenship. Now, this is a draft. So, what will happen at this point is all of these materials will be vetted through different committees. We want to have buy-in from the staff, we want to have input and reflection and feedback from our principals because this isn't our plan, this is our plan as a division. We've sort of mapped out a draft of what we would like to see in year one, year two, and year three. As you can see, that there's a rationale for why we're doing this. And then we want to emphasize that there is division-level professional learning and then there is school-level professional learning. I think what you will see is that the division-level school, professional learning supports all of the schools, but it's also based on division-level data and division-level needs. Currently, this plan only focuses on our instructional staff. Our long-term goal is to make sure that we have a professional learning plan that not only addresses instruction, but it also addresses the needs of our classified staff. Because we recognize that we need training programs for bus drivers, for our custodians, for our health services workers, and so we want to touch professional learning at every level. But at this juncture, we're starting with instruction. And we have some examples here of, you know, the types of responsibility. We have to develop a professional learning community where we have those things based upon the defores who suggest that you, as a school division, decide what you're going to be tight on and what you're going to be loose on. And one of the things that we... And one of the things that we as a team have decided is that we are going to be tight on the fact that our professional learning has to be a continuous learning cycle. And if you will look on the third page there, you will see the cycle that we mapped out, which is to learn, collaborate, reflect, and impact. And that's kind of the cycle that we're working with. So just some, you know, different drafts here that you see and the pieces that we're putting together, our vision, this will be something that we'll develop, as I said, at the division level. And then we have the tools listed there that we currently have in place that we can use for professional learning. We want to centralize some of that. We also want to make sure that we have blended learning opportunities for our staff because we recognize that they're busy and we don't want the people to continue to have to stay after school and be pulled on weekends. We want to find opportunities for them to be able to sit down at the computer and pull our professional learning opportunities online and do them at their leisure at home. And then there are other outside sources that we can tap into like T-TAC and Vista and, of course, the Virginia Department of Education. And if you look on the last page there, you will see, again, a draft of some of the different components of our professional learning plan. All of this is based on the fact that we recognize that right now, our professional development is somewhat disjointed. And so we need a division-wide professional development plan that will be aligned totally with the goals of our strategic, our division-wide strategic plan and the goals of the school board and will also enable us to focus on what is most important, which is, of course, increasing student achievement. Any questions?
Any questions? I have, go ahead.
No, I was going to say, I want to thank Dr. Taylor and her staff for taking the steps to get this foundational level of instruction in place. Because without this training, we really wouldn't have a direction in terms of where we need to go and what our needs are. So this is the groundwork that needed to be done. So I want to definitely thank her and the staff because this, this is intense. This is very intense. This is not something that you just sit down and just snap out within a couple of hours.
Right.
And as we began to get into the strategic planning process for the division, that takes months. At minimum, six months to get that in place with all the different steps that you have to take in order to get that done. So this is the beginning of what I think will be a great document once we finish it.
Oh, okay. Mrs. Hines?
I'm sorry, thank you, Chairman. I like the fact, A, well, thank you that it's done because this is, this is a labor of love for me. And so you had me at the words relevant and purposeful. You had me there, you know, I mean, you had me at hello, you had me at relevant and purposeful. The fact that you have identified that you've got school and division-based staff, I'm going to call it staff development because that's the old term, but learning opportunities for them is wonderful. Have we addressed the issue of the teacher calendar and teacher workdays to go along with this? Because as you said, staying after and Saturdays is, it becomes very taxing, not only on the teachers, but on the people that are, that are being tasked and being asked to do this. So going into the calendar years, we start looking at calendars for the next instructional years, are we going to develop time in that calendar so that this can be done during, you know, during school days with early release days, with staff development days, with, you know, building in that time for that to happen because it is, it is intense work and we do want to value everybody's time. And I, and I just think on our webpage, and I'm just going back to the webpage and trying to pull this in, if we do a book study, Dr. Bracy, and you're reading the book, I think, I think you should tell everybody what you're reading. I think having, having a reading list for the staff, you know, for the division, what are you currently reading so that they, you know, somebody can pick up a book and have a conversation with you? It just might be a fun idea, but, you know, I'm just saying, book studies are wonderful and that will be done division and school-wide as well, depending on the needs of the schools, I'm assuming. But this is a labor of love. I love it. Relevant and purposeful, I'm good. So, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Mr. Bridgewater, did you, did you have your hands up? Mr. Lamb?
I just have one question. I, I see the vision statement and I understand it. My question is, and it's not rhetorical, but at the end of year three and beyond, and as you put these components in place, what do you envision? How, what is this going to look like as far as, for, for an instructor, a teacher? What kind of, do you understand what I'm asking?
Absolutely. What this looks like for a teacher, well, there are many layers of it. As I said, there's a division level where we have to focus on our strategic goals. That needs to be aligned at the school level when we look at our school improvement process, which is where we have, that gives us a blueprint for everything that we do, including professional learning. But for an individual teacher, it's also embedded in that, that evaluation piece and the performance process. And so, part of the teacher's reflection is to look at their performance and determine and have some input on their own individual professional development, as well as what the school would have for them. I think if you look at page, the second page where it says school-level professional learning, one of the things that we're suggesting there, as I said, this is a draft. So we want to have input from other staff members. And I want to say that Dr. Fox and the curriculum instruction team have been wonderful because this is a plan that they have all kind of mapped out for now. But right now, we're saying that licensed staff will participate in a minimum of eight hours of school-level professional learning from August until May of 2017. One of the things that we've looked at is that right now, we see a lot of PD the first few days of school, what they call, you know?
In-service.
We're looking to cut that back because teachers really need time in their classrooms. And so this process will help us structure that.
Well, and can I, can I piggyback to, I'm sorry, thank you, just to piggyback. When, when that development is done in one shot, there's no sustainability. You know, it's almost like you're throwing it on the wall and praying that it sticks. And so if we do do it, if we do, if we do do it over time, then it is sustainable, it's relevant, it's more timely, and it's more what's in it for me, rather than, oh, I've got to sit here for another two and a half hours. So it answers that question, what's in it for me, which is really what teachers want to take, go into this knowing and come out of it knowing, what did I get out of it? So thank you for that.
Any other questions? Now, the chairman gets to ask questions. I want to first of all commend you and Dr. Bracy and your entire staff because, once upon a time, I was direct for staff development and, and it's a lot of work. And this is, this is, this was not done overnight. And it's a lot of research. One of the things that I, I do have a real passion, because I think at, at the school level, when you're talking, and one of your samples, examples would be horizontal and vertical articulation meetings. If that's not occurring across the board vertically, then there's no dialogue. And I want to make sure that, that then your department somehow holds the principals responsible, and I don't know whether it's a review of minutes, but if you say that we're going to have horizontal and vertical articulation meetings and teachers get together and they talk K6, or they take, are talking grade groups, because a lot of it's grade groups, but you learn awful lot if you do the case, the K6 meetings. And if that's never been done, then there isn't any dialogue. Can I, to me, when I was principal, I found that to be one of the most powerful avenues of my staff, is that we had teachers talking to teachers. And the kindergarten teachers being able to ask questions, at that time, fifth-grade teachers, and fifth-grade teachers saying, you know, where do we begin? And we begin in kindergarten. So there's a cross-section of discussion and it's amazing of how they, they began to work together. Now, grade groups, it's easy. But you know, that vertical is when you, you put all the teachers together and they learn from each other because the skills build on one another. And it's very important that the kindergartens, the kindergarten teacher, the preschool teachers see the end in mind, as well as the end in mind sees the beginning. So I don't know how, how you're going to build accountability, because all of this has got to be monitored. Because, I mean, it's great on paper, looks great on paper, but it's got to be monitored or it's just words on paper.
Two things I want to stick, you know, to talk about in the session.
Absolutely.
We are working to be?
How Elvis. Don't, don't pick me up.
Real quick. And this is a diagnostic approach that we're using this year. We have teams, Dr. Fox leads up the teams of curriculum folks who go into buildings and we actually observe classrooms and we observe team meetings. So that would be a part of that process. It would also be a part of the school improvement process to monitor that because it's all about accountability. We are changing the, the language that we use within our schools. There was a time when we focused on those grade levels that were only being tested. We no longer do that. Because at some point, every grade level's being tested, so we do have accountability.
Thank you.
Can I ask one more question before we move on?
All right.
Please, Chairman, thank you.
Yes.
It'll be brief. Mr. Bridgewater? Have we looked at using protocols?
Yes.
To, to facilitate these meetings, to make sure that each meeting, as best as it can be, is bringing about the same? Okay, thank you.
All right. Moving on to the next item, 3.7, Approval to Utilize State Pre-qualified Contractors Pool Cooperative Contract Number DEB-0401-2015 for CSEP renovations. Dr. Bracy?
Yes. I will ask Mr. Steele, if you would, to speak on this at this time.
Thank you, Dr. Bracy. We're asking the school board to vote on approving Portsmouth Public Schools to utilize a state pre-qualified contractors pool cooperative contract. And we're going to use this contract for CSEP renovations at SH Clark. We are using this contract, it's focusing on pre-qualified leaders that focus on SWAM vendors, are small women-owned and minority-owned businesses. And we have a pre-qualified list that, that the state has already vetted. And there's a procedure where we follow by selecting pre-qualified, small women and minority-owned businesses to, that are pre-qualified to bid on our specifications. Transformation Consulting has reviewed and evaluated this requirement for MWBE compliance and has approved the use of the contract. Project's MWBE goal is established at 9%, which coincides with Portsmouth Public Schools' aspirational goal for construction sub-level. And it has recommended the school board grant approval to utilize the Division of Engineering and Buildings Pre-qualified Contractors Pool Cooperative Contract for CSEP renovation work at SH Clark.
Move for approval.
Second.
Motion's made, second. Any discussion? Seeing there's no discussion, Madam Clerk, roll call vote.
Mr. Bridgewater?
Yes.
Reverend Fleming?
Yes.
Mrs. Hines?
Yes.
Mr. Lamb?
Yes.
Mr. Nance?
Yes.
Reverend Patillo?
Yes.
Mrs. Williams?
Yes.
Pann?
Yes.
Janamus?
Next item on the agenda is 3.8, Resolution, Categorical Adjustment to Fiscal Year 2015-16. Dr. Bracy?
Dr. Bracy, as you know, Portsmouth Public Schools is under categorical appropriation from the city. And this resolution is to request a movement of funds from instruction to administration attendance and health for special education, occupational therapy, and physical services. And I'll read the resolution. Whereas the Office of Special Ed provides occupational therapy and physical therapy to disabled children as determined by the Individual Education Plan. And whereas the school board has identified the need for increased funding to provide these services to special ed students for fiscal year 2015 to 16, now therefore be it by the Portsmouth City School Board, that it hereby request the Portsmouth City Council to realign the fiscal year 2015-16 general fund budget effective third quarter in the amount of $305,907.41 as follows. And the table below delineates that, that exchange. And be it further resolved that the clerk of the school board is directed to forward a copy of this resolution to the mayor, members of city council requesting action at the next city council meeting.
Thank you. What is the pleasure of the board? May for approval.
Second.
Motion's been made and second. Any discussion? Reverend Patillo?
Yes, sir. I just wanted to confirm that this is just approval for categorical adjustments, but the Department of Special Ed is in compliance. All students have been receiving services as.
That is correct. That is correct. Thank you. Madam Clerk, roll call vote.
Mr. Bridgewater?
Yes.
Reverend Fleming?
Yes.
Mrs. Hines?
Yes.
Mr. Lamb?
Yes.
Mr. Nance?
Yes.
Reverend Patillo?
Yes.
Mrs. Williams?
Yes.
Mr. Pann?
Yes.
Janamus?
Thank you. Next item on the agenda is 3.9, A Resolution to Transfer of PPS Health Self-Insurance Plan. Dr. Bracy?
Still, can you continue?
Dr. Bracy, this is a resolution of the City of Portsmouth, Virginia City Council to approve the City of Portsmouth, Virginia School Board's transfer of funds in the self-insurance program from the general fund to the risk management fund, which is an internal service fund, and to realign the fiscal year 2015 general fund and risk management fund budget over categories due to this request. Whereas the City of Portsmouth, Virginia School Board approved a self-insurance model for employee health insurance starting January 1st, 2015, and all activity and fund balance reserved associated with the self-insurance program is currently reported in the general fund. And whereas the school board has identified the need to provide greater transparency and clarity to the amounts associated with the self-insurance program, and Government Accounting Standard Board Statement Number 10, Accounting and Financial Reporting for Risk Financing and Related Insurance Issues, allows for the reporting of risk financing activity in an internal service fund. And whereas the school board has an established internal service fund, which is the risk management fund that can be used to report the activity of the self-health insurance program, now therefore be it resolved that the school board respectfully request the city council to approve the transfer of the self-insurance program activity and fund balance reserve from the general fund to the risk management fund. And be it further resolved that the school board respectfully request the city council to realign the 2015-16 budget over categories listed in the table below due to the transfer of the self-insurance program from the general fund to the risk management fund. And be it further resolved that the clerk of the school board is directed to forward a copy of this resolution to the mayor and members of city council requesting action at the next school, next council meeting.
What is the board's pleasure? Move for approval.
Second.
Motion's been made, properly second. Any discussion? Mr. Sines?
Thank you, Chairman. I just, I need to clarify because I just want to understand in, in my terms, rather than whereas and therefore to. The categorical adjustment that we're asking from instruction is already money that was for benefits, basically as health insurance. And so we're just moving it from one fund to the other because we need to be transparent and make sure that our money is really where it needs to be. This is not impacting instruction in a negative way. It's not impacting classrooms, it's not impacting teacher salary, it's already the benefits we had already laid out.
Correct.
And we're moving it from one place to another because that's really where they need to be, rather than in this category.
Well, it's, it's not that it can't be here, but it, as the resolution indicates, provides more transparency, transparency and clarity on how we're spending our money. So then we can look at the risk management fund by line and exactly see, see how it's being spent. And it's currently how we manage insurance programs on the risk management fund also. It's also the same way the city manages their, their health self-insurance. So we're basically going along with how the city does it.
Okay.
It's just simply from general fund to risk management, that's all it is.
And I just wanted to clarify that this was not a negative impact of instruction, that it was money that was already there for this reason.
Correct.
Okay. That's, that was my main concern. On the second page, where it says instruction and we have the 15-16 appropriation of $270,000 and then we have another categorical, categorical adjustment of a huge number here, where does that money come from?
On the second table, you're talking?
Mm-hmm, on the second table.
Category. Again, this is coming from the general fund and also, and in particular, the restricted fund balance that we had accumulated all these amounts into, into our fund balance.
Okay. Thank you.
Still Lamb?
Yeah. Again, going back to the, the second page, when you're saying, and I understand on the first- page, where the categorical adjustment is in the parentheses of what's being taken out, but then when we come over to the second page, can you elaborate or explain it out? Because it's, to me, it's just not making, it's just not making sense. Where are these numbers coming from?
Can I explain?
Yeah, I'm going to defer to Brittany.
Do it.
So when you have a health self-insurance plan, not only are we paying into the plan for our employees, employer share, you also have the employees paying into the fund as well. So we have to estimate how much funds are going to go into our health plan, employer and employee. And you have to report that in your plan as your charges for services or your revenue that's going into the plan. So we want to make sure from the budget perspective that we've established that we expect this amount of money to go into our health insurance plan based on what we plan to pay into it and what our employees plan to pay into it.
Okay. So, so what I understand you're saying is then, like, say, under any one of these categories here, instruction or administration or so forth, these numbers are reflecting not so much taking this amount of money out of instruction, but it's what the teacher or whoever is already paying for healthcare. This is the total amount of what that is. It's not taking out of the classroom as much as just paying for what Ms. Hines was talking about with regards to what they would have been paying in premiums, anyway.
Yes.
And that's what each one of these categories would be?
Yes.
Plus the employer's share.
Plus the employer's share.
Correct.
Yeah, because this internal service fund is providing a service to all of our other funds. So because the internal service fund is not sustainable on its own, it has to charge the other funds expenses in order for it to cover the health expenses that the internal service fund has to pay for.
So this is, yeah, so this is just more really insurance premiums is one way of just saying it?
Yes.
Okay. All right.
No discussion? All right, Madam Clerk, roll call vote.
Mr. Bridgeford?
Yes.
Reverend Fleming?
Yes.
Mrs. Hines?
Yes.
Mr. Lamb?
Yes.
Mr. Nance?
Yes.
Reverend Patillo?
Yes.
Mrs. Williams?
Yes.
Mr. Parent?
Yes. Next item on the agenda is 3.10. Budget Revision Categorical Adjustment to Fiscal Year 2015-2016. Dr. Bracy.
Thank you. Chairman Parent.
On this last budget item is, on Tuesday, the city council passed an ordinance that increased our grant appropriation by $137,363. And in the attachment to the executive summary, you can see that it was for math and science partnership competitive mini-grant program, VDOEs, adult basic education programs, the Virginia Middle School Teacher Corps, and increased Title I allocations under ESEA. And also for the Virginia Department of Education Mentor Teachers Program, along with some increased funding for previously budgeted state and federal grants. Again, that was passed by the city council. They have increased our appropriation, and this is a request of the school board to revise our grant budget by that amount.
What is the board's pleasure?
May for approval?
Second. Motion's been made, and second, any discussion?
Get that for me.
I have one question. We resubmitted the Title II?
Yes.
Have we heard back from that?
Not yet.
Okay. Any further discussion? Who?
Mr. Witness.
Oh, okay. Madam Clerk, roll call vote, please.
Mr. Bridgeford?
Yes.
Reverend Fleming?
Yes.
Mrs. Hines?
Yes.
Mr. Lamb?
Yes.
Mr. Nance?
Yes.
Reverend Patillo?
Yes.
Mrs. Williams?
Yes.
Mr. Parent?
Yes.
Ananmas.
Thank you. Moving right along, 3.11. Discussion. Agenda Review for February the 25th. Dr. Bracy.
Thank you, Chairman Parent. If you will turn to your agenda for our regular monthly meeting Thursday, February 25th, I will go over the agenda. Number one, information, our call letter, public notice. Number two, early session meeting at 5:30, we'll have a discussion, and then I will have the proposed budget for 2017. We have a closed session as well. Number three, meeting, the open meeting, beginning at 7:00, we'll have the call to order by Chairman Parent, our moment of silence. We have Parkview Elementary School that will be with us in a couple of weeks. We have the school board mission statement. Mr. Bridgeford will be reading that. Then we will have our attendance roll call vote. We'll have the approval of the agenda. Number four, presentation, recognition of VSBA School Board Appreciation Month. We also have our schools attendance report. Number five, we have our minutes that we will vote on. Number six, our public comment for non-agenda items as well as board agenda items. We move to seven, we have our monthly report from curriculum instruction, Dr. Taylor. Number eight, human resources, monthly report by Mr. Ziegler. Then we will have our electronic vote for the employee transaction report. Number nine, our budgeting planning, Mr. Steele. Then we have placeholder for purchase, purchasing contract, if we have one to add at that time. Then we will have our electronic vote for our financial report. Number 10, superintendent's report, 10.2, board members' comments and concerns. Number 11, our adjournment.
Since this is discussion, moving right on to 3.12. If there's, oh, excuse me, I'm sorry.
No, that's quite okay. You'll get used to seeing my hand go up.
I have to keep my neck moving around.
Two things. Number, I don't know if I'm supposed to talk about one of them here or not, but I'm going to bring it up because I had called Chairman Parent over the weekend.
Either, it could either be here or board members' reports. Either way, it doesn't matter.
Well, Saturday, last Saturday was a busy day. We started off with the budget meeting at Churchland High School, and then later in the afternoon, after my traveling partner who's for got a little bit of a rest, we went to Wilson High School to catch the robotics because he really likes the robots. And I got there right as they were doing awards. And we have four teams from Vex Robotics that's going to state. The state competition is next weekend, over the 20th through the 22nd. And so I called Chairman Bridgeford, I'm sorry, Chairman Parent about maybe having a robotics team come and show off at the, at the board meeting in February. And so Mr. Parent and I talked about it. It's something that's been done before, and maybe have them do a display or a demo out in the welcoming area, you know, 6:30 to 7:00 before. And then hopefully we have some good news to share, you know, because it will be after state, and if anybody wins at any levels of the state, then, you know, we'll have some awards and some accolades that we can talk about then. But since we do have these, these robots that go to state and it is one of our specialty programs, I thought by having them come and show off, I like "show off" is the right word I'm going to use, to see if we couldn't put this into the board meeting as well.
Okay. Mr., oh, I'm sorry. When that pencil went up, I thought, I got to get, no, I got to get used to that.
I got a question, Mr. Sines. Where is the state competition?
The state, it's in Northern Virginia. I'm not exactly sure where. I just, Nova pops up in my head.
I believe it's in Dazwell.
Dazwell. Okay.
That's near Kingsley.
Mm-hmm.
Catch and train.
Second question.
Wait a minute.
Okay.
Either one, I got to see y'all's hand go up. Okay. All right.
Number two, and I see that, Dr. Bracy, you have your budget presentation at our 5:30 session next time. Is there any way that we can maybe do an abbreviated version at the 7 o'clock of a budget presentation? This is going to be a packed room for a budget presentation at 5:30, and there are some people that may not be able to be here at 5:30. Is there a way that maybe we can do a, a shorter budget presentation at the 7 o'clock, whether it's in budget and planning or in your superintendent comments? I don't know if that's been done before.
Mrs. Williams?
We do have the joint council meeting before this, right?
Twenty-second.
And that meeting will encompass the presentation of the budget.
Yes.
Have we decided yet what we're going to? That's usually the...
Once we have the meeting with the liaison, that will drive the agenda for the joint meeting.
But that joint meeting is, for everyone, is February 22nd, before our regular meeting.
And you and I and Dr. Bracy have a meeting on the 16th. Our second meeting with the city, with the liaison, that we will draft the agenda.
Right, okay. So you want the budget presentation at all?
No, at the 7 o'clock, instead of just at the 5:30. Just because this does get to be a crowded room, there are people that can't make it to the 5:30 session, and honestly, that may not want to make it to the 5:30 because sometimes we go into closed sessions, sometimes we don't, and, you know, that impacts, you know, their decisions to come. But, you know, even if it's not the full-blown, because you're right, we will have the budget presentation on the 22nd. Usually, city council has their meetings up pretty quickly on their, you know, on their site, on their television stations so that they can be watched. And while it may not be as detailed of a presentation that we would get at the 5:30 session, but just a brief overview at the 7 o'clock where there may be more people here and it may be a little bit more convenient for more people to come. Just a thought.
Yeah, we can do a condensed version. And what we can do is put it under the budget.
Right.
And just, we got, we got the same setup where we can put up a PowerPoint. So, yeah, we can do that. We can also work on what we presented here, then we can do an abbreviated presentation for the, for the 7 o'clock session.
And I just think it would be good for people to hear it from your mouth and have you walk through it the same way you do with us to, to the public so that they can hear and understand and feel your passion about what needs to be where.
And the robotics demonstration, we have done that before, right out of the... And then it could be under, it could be under either Dr. Taylor's report to acknowledge the students. Yeah. Or it could be under, well, we don't want the students...
Well, they usually leave.
Yeah, they do leave, yeah.
They do it out here before.
We can do it at the beginning. We can add it at the beginning because we want to honor them and thank them.
They normally do it at 6:30 before we go in.
Yeah.
Because they have to have the space.
Right.
Right. But what we wanted to do is to, for them to come in and somehow acknowledge their, acknowledge them, yes. Because as she said, we may have a winner. We may have winner.
Because from there, if they, if anybody wins anything, it's, they go on to world competitions after that. So that, that would be the next level.
Well, if, you know, at 7 o'clock, you know, right after...
You have to do it early.
It have to be right after the, like the...
Student presentation.
Student presentation. It could be, we could do that and just acknowledge them and...
Okay.
Because we've already seen their demonstration, and it, I mean, it was really, it's really fascinating, so.
It is, it is pretty cool.
Okay, so we can make those...
Yeah, we can insert it.
Okay.
Okay, thank you.
All right, thank you. 3.12. Dr. Bracy received the call from our executive director, Nina Patterson, and I also made contact with her. And yesterday, she and I had, at the Capitol Conference Legislative Conference, she and I talked about it, and she is requesting a, a follow-up training session with the board. Remember, we had a training session at the, was it Behavior Science, Social Security, uh, Social?
Social Service.
Social Services building. And I asked her what would be different from what training we received. And, excuse me, she said that, you know, we could do some of the things that were discussed because we didn't have all of the board members attending, for one thing. And the other thing is she wanted to go into depth with the board evaluation and, and other issues that would come before the board. And the two dates that she has in mind, it's either, they are available in May and they're available in September. Now, here's what I'm throwing out. I mean, I don't, I mean, I don't have a, I think would be great, the more training we receive as board members, it's fine. But some of you around this table are going to be in, running for office. And in September, you're going to be really, really in-depth with campaigning. May may be the better month because when you get into September, that's close to, close to November of the election. So if you want to do this, if this is your desire to do this, to have a follow-up training, then maybe, maybe May would be the better month than September, but that's up to you. I want to know what, what your pleasure is. Mr. Bridgeford?
Same times, roughly.
Yeah.
I mean, I'm talking, the day, the day for the day, on like 10 to 3 or something like that.
Yeah. And they're willing to come here. I said, you know, we're not coming to Shoresville. And, and she already knew that. So they're, both, she and Peter are willing to come to us.
They're interested in giving them some more training, I know that.
Yes. Reverend Patillo?
I guess the main thing would be, I believe some of the board members can't make it because of work during that time of the day. So I don't see how it would be beneficial to, to have the training again if the same board members can't make it because of work.
Right.
Then we'll be doing the same thing over again.
You know?
I think if anything, you would have to consider their schedules and maybe either change the time or...
Well, time is, I mean, actually, the time's up to us. I mean, I mean, the time is up to us. I mean, she's flexible one way or the other, but they only have two months that they're available to come. Okay. So if you want it in the afternoon, we could have it in the afternoon and probably have, you know, dinner served or box lunch served and, and do it. I think we did it for like three hours.
We were here from 10, we did it from 10 to 3, if I remember correctly.
10 to 3, 10 to 3:30.
Reverend Lamb, I mean Reverend Lamb, Lord knows it. I'm looking at...
Ooh!
I have, you're now a minister. Yeah. Did I miss it? Reverend Lamb, I was looking at Reverend Fleming and I called you. You've been, you've been elevated to a higher rank.
I'll stay in my special education classroom at this point with that, but...
It's okay.
No, I was going to say, and with, related to this, if we go May and it's during the day, that's right in the middle of SOLs. And usually with that, if you're tied to school or in a classroom or even an administrator, it's kind of difficult to get out of those responsibilities and duties that's, that's tied to it. I mean...
Well, what I'm asking, what, if the board, if it's the board's pleasure, what I'm hearing that maybe an afternoon so that you would be free, those of you that teach and have jobs would be free and would be available. Because I really believe that as a board, all nine of us need to be present. I mean, that's important that we, we work as a team.
Correct.
Let's do everything, we can do everything we can to make sure that we're accommodating those of you that it will be affected.
That's fine. I just don't want to, because it's 10 to 3, which is five hours.
Well, that's, that's what, that's what we did.
Right.
We found that convenient for the board.
But we can, we can, she's open to do whatever this board and however long this board and whatever items on the agenda. It is us. This is our agenda.
Because I just didn't want to hold everyone up, you know, if it's going to be a 3 to 8 or, or something like that, just because I can't get here during the day, kind of thing. thing.
So am I hearing like, I mean, is three o'clock or four o'clock a reasonable time?
Four o'clock would be a more reasonable.
Be a start for start time.
A start time.
I mean...
And then we'll have, we'll have dinner.
Did she indicate she would do it up until night?
I gotta call her.
Yeah, they didn't want to do it.
I...
Yeah, I know she had a concern about, she was trying to keep from staying over overnight.
Right.
Because it's additional expenses.
Right. I will talk to her.
Like she says, she stays on the road a lot as it is, so...
Right.
I know when I was trying to contract her for that, that was one of the problems that she didn't really wants to go. She didn't, she didn't want to stay like eight or nine o'clock and then try to drive back that night.
Right, I will ask her.
So...
But I'm hearing the board...
They would try to get that clear first.
Well, she can make Peter drive, sir, she can make Peter drive back.
Okay. Mrs. Williams.
Well, it sounds like Gina wants to do the follow-up training with us.
Yes.
It didn't sound like we asked Gina to do it for us.
No.
So...
It was not a request that we asked, that she did talk to Dr...
Right, she wanted to follow up, to do it.
Right.
So if we have board members that are working, that are not going to be able to do it, it's no sense in us doing it because Gina said from the very first time...
Sure, when everybody...
Everybody has to be present.
Right.
But she did have a lot of stipulations on when she could do it.
Right.
And, right, she didn't want to stay after a certain time.
Right.
And people work.
Right.
So...
I will call her tomorrow and find out the hours, I mean, let her know that it could be like four to seven thirty, three hours, and if she's not amenable to that, then we will thank them for following up, but then...
Um...
I'm sorry.
I'm sorry, go ahead, Ms. Hines.
Thank you. Two things, number one, I would, I would choose May over September simply because, like you said, September is in the middle of an election and I'm sure you probably would want to do new training with your new board, once your new board is in place. And so as a respect of, you know, the board's time that's not running, to not do, have to do training, you know, twice within six months. So, I mean, I'm all about professional learning, I mean, I'm, you know, that's what we do. So I prefer May over September and really for September for, you know, two reasons, election time and you're going to do board member, new board training...
Anyway.
In January, February, and you may want to talk to her about those dates too before she gets...
Right.
Too booked.
Right. That was one of my thoughts too, that it may not be May or September, but it may be sometimes January or February.
Right.
Because you'll have, you might have any board. Mr. Bridgford.
No, the professional training, I was gonna say, I don't know how many hours she's talking about this time.
Right.
I think that's the main thing. I know she's trying to get us all together because we, you know, we're doing such, so great working together.
Right.
And she says she really want to try to get, she had failed to get together with us.
Right.
Doing all this time, so she was trying to make us, give us a little bit more adhesive or, and like she said, we were doing good, she wants to try to get it more, it's one or two hiccups she just wants to try to get in on and try to get those straightened up.
Exactly.
And I think it's well worth the time.
It is, I think it is too. Okay. Board members' reports, have any board members' reports?
While you're shuffling, I just want to say thank you to Dr. Bracy and your staff for the three public, public budget meeting hearings that you had with the city. They went very well, they pretty much attended pretty well. You know, we had a lot of the same demographics that came out, so it'll be interesting to see those demographics once everything is, is put together, but after attending all three, you see a lot of the same trends and a lot of the, and it was, it's good to see education in the last one, you know, it was kind of in the same top three, you know, where before we kind of fell out of number four or five, but in the last one we stayed in the top three and I think that was our youngest crowd, you know, where the majority were between, you know, forty and fifty-five or something to that effect. But you guys did a wonderful job. Dean, I'm gonna hire you out as my next emcee. You had a blast. My son was actually intrigued for forty minutes, you know, it was about all I could keep him entertained for and then he became playful in the auditorium, but you kept, y'all kept his attention for forty minutes, so that's doing pretty good. But thank you guys for being open and honest and laying it out as best as you could without, there's certain things you can't talk about because of personnel and all that good stuff, but it was very clear. The audience had very little questions when it came time for it to be over with, so you guys did a wonderful job. There was one comment that I heard from a parent who'd asked about, where's the arts in education? You know, we talked a lot about CTE and I said, well, that's where our push is really going, so we want to make sure that everybody understands the conversation around it, that we're not taking arts away, you know, they're still going to be there, so, but I just wanted to say thank you to you guys because you guys pulled it off wonderfully. And the partnership between you and the city manager is very evident, you're using the same language, you guys can complete each other's sentences and that speaks volumes for the public to see and to hear that and then to partake in that. So just wonderful job all around, so thank you very much.
Thank you, Mrs. Williams.
Go ahead, please.
I'm glad you brought it up because I wanted to make sure that the staff knows how much I appreciate what they did to pull all that together.
Yes.
What you all don't know is that, you know, Dean was one of the guys behind the scene and what was the other lady?
Taxin.
Christie Taxin.
Right.
She was the brains.
Right, yeah, he referred to her as the brains of the, of the... But we met prior to the, those meetings with the city and actually walked through the same process with the responders ourselves and as we did that, we sort of modified some questions, added some, took some out to make sure that we came up with what everybody was going with. So that was collaboration, not with Dr. Patton and myself, but our IT and their IT, our finance department, city's finance department, all of us working together to get the questions and the language together, so it showed, as you mentioned, with the sessions, it went very well.
Yes.
And I want to thank them, they made my job easy by putting everything together.
That was fun.
Yeah, that, I had the easy part, just to stand up and deliver, so they did the heavy lifting and I want to appreciate, I want to personally and publicly thank them for doing that. You have a great team.
All right, I have one item, I, oh, I'm sorry Reverend Patel.
Just a couple items. For the last three weeks, I've been a lot of mentoring at these directions, facility and spending time with the kids and trying to encourage them and it's really been a pull on my heart as far as making sure that we strengthen, I spoke to Dr. Bracy already and Dr. Taylor about strengthening our CTE programs and making sure that we offer programs for children who are not interested in attending college. I also, I went ahead and did some research on the, with the state direct aid template they have online and they give us a great amount of resources for CTE every year. And I know that we don't utilize all of that funding, so I want to make sure that we even look at that when we're looking at the cost of these programs and make sure we have those available. The programs we have are great, but even when visiting the culinary arts program and nursing program, you know, most of those students are still interested in attending college, you know, after they finish those programs here in Portsmouth. But we have a large population of students who are not interested in attending college and I just want to make sure that they leave Portsmouth Public Schools with a trade or something they have where they can be effective in the community and the workforce once they graduate from high school. And it's really been pulling on me and we have students who are in alternative programs who are not aware of our CTE programs, you know, so I spoke with Dr. Taylor about that also as far as how we can make sure that GAD and Council are heavily involved with letting that population of students know, you know, what we have to offer as far as what tech education is concerned with that. So I just wanted to put that out there and make sure we kind of get the chairman of, allow the superintend to really look into that, you know, deeper and further than making sure we are doing all we can.
Perfect. Mrs. Williams.
In fact, that was part of our discussion at our last meeting that Chairman Parent and I and Dr. Bracy met with the city manager about trying to bring the vocational technical aspect back into Portsmouth Public Schools because as it stands now, I think a lot of the kids, they partner with TCC, but they still have to have that average...
Right.
...in order to get in there.
Right.
So I wanted to discuss that at our liaison meeting as well as part of our long-term look of how we could do that to bring it back into our school system. It used to be at IC Norfolk, they say, so, and a lot of kids, like you said, are not going to college. So what we need to do to plan, well, it's long range or whatever, at the end of the year, maybe some of the re-appropriated money could go into CIP where we could develop this, but certainly we want to get on board with our council people so that we can really work this as a team.
Right.
But thanks, because we were all thinking the same thing. And I did see your post that you were mentoring with the alternative school and I saw you over there working and that was really nice. I was very, very impressed, very touched that you as a board member, you take that extra step to go out there and do that, but that was real good.
Thank you.
And, oh, and the other thing I want to add with the report is, not small but brief, if we could possibly have Mr. Steele and Mr. Canyon look at the possibility of, within our purchasing policy, maybe having a local, a local preference that's still in line with NWE policy, but having a local preference to make sure we're reaching out to our Portsmouth vendors.
Vendors.
And also Hampton Roads area. And not only that, so to implement an internship clause in our contracts, which means that they're awarded a contract that they'll provide an internship or shadowing opportunity for Portsmouth students maybe interested in that similar field. So for instance, if we're going to be having a contract with Ameresco doing HVAC, if it's a possibility that we have students who are interested in HVAC, they could possibly intern with Ameresco or shadow them as a clause within our purchasing contract. And when checking the procurement laws online, I didn't see anything that showed it to be illegal or anything, but of course you all would have to check into that. But if that could be a possibility, again, just looking at providing possibilities for our students, once they finish high school, if they have an internship with those companies already, quite possibly they have a job too waiting for them, so just, that's a possibility that we can actually look into that.
Okay. Mr. Vance.
Well, I already gave my board member report already with the new website, with the Technology Committee we met, so y'all have already received that. But another thing is, when we also mentioned CTE a few weeks ago, we said perhaps having a special ed component didn't do well. We need to look at that component.
Good idea.
Because there are industries and skills that can be taught in a special ed environment that can make a child a productive workforce member. Thank you.
Mrs. Hines.
Go ahead, go ahead.
You supposed to be giving board reports now, you, subcommittee reports?
Not yet, we haven't gotten off the board reports.
Oh, sorry.
We haven't moved to that yet.
Okay, make sure.
I just want to get board members' reports.
Oh, sorry.
Mrs. Hines, that's okay.
To follow along with Reverend Patel and Vice Chair Williams, one of the things Dr. Bracy and I had discussed earlier was, the big question I asked him was what does thirteen years in Portsmouth Public Schools get you? If you're here with us for thirteen years, what does that look like when you come out? So piggybacking with the trades, with the certificates, that goes right along with it, so I'm all on board for that. The other piece of that too though is, and I guess this is going to be more for Dr. Taylor, is a program of studies. Do we have an available program of studies for our students to look at, you know, where it's the little snippets of what's required to get into this class? I didn't find it on the old website.
Hmm.
And I'm sure it's going to need to be updated with especially the two new CTE classes that we're adding, but I think to have a clear, concise program of studies, because I know at one time we did a syllabus and it was, you know, four hundred and seventy-two pages of outlines, but I just think little snippets of program of studies to give students and parents a quick glimpse of what they can take to get in, especially into those career tracks, because that's where, that's where the State Department's going is with the career tracks. And so if we're going to look at, you know, a construction or an HVAC piece, what are some of the, what are some of the math classes, what are some of the English classes that they need to take to be able to get to there? And I know that's a long-term project as well, yes, but so that it is transparent and there's no, there's no tricks, there's no gotchas in this, so that students and parents can see where their tracks are and what their requirements are to get into those specific programs. So I think as we, as we start building out, and it's not anything that we can do tomorrow, but also looking at our program of studies so that we, that our parents in our city know that after thirteen years, this is what you can walk out with, but here's the work that needs to go into that as well, so, thank you.
Okay, any more to discuss? Well, I do have a board report. Yesterday I attended the Capitol Legislative Meeting in Richmond and the governor spoke and what you've been talking about was basically his speech because some of the, some of the main comments that he made was looking at redesigning the high school and understanding that, you know, looking at the junior year and the senior year of the work experience. And he said, at this point, there were, and there's seventeen thousand job openings in Northern Virginia and they're all in cybersecurity. Very, he's very, was very adamant about code writing courses. His big emphasis is on vocational trade, technical education. He was talking about, and I had not heard this, but this one, two, seven, for every one job, for every one job in a business, then you would, they would hire two people with degrees, with bachelor's degrees, that would be supported by seven frontline workers, support people who would not have, you know, a degree. And also that, you know, trying to talk to parents about, you know, it's important to go to college. Well, not everybody, as you've already mentioned, not everybody is going to college. Some will be going to technical school. And he said, you know, it's just as important, and he was talking about equal certification as a welder, because apparently we need welders, that shift has moved to technical education. And you're going to hear more and more from, from the legislature. And there are three areas. One is how we build capacity. Number two, how do we, how do we reward performances? And in other words, how do we make technical education more affordable so that students will be able to go? But he really addressed very heavily workforce readiness and I gave you a copy of the budget priorities, I'm not going to read these to you, these are the three pages of the budget, excuse me, the budget priorities and you can read those. Was a lot of discussion about charter school, constitution amendment, and of course the VSBA of course is opposed to that. And the third one, the one that came to mind was the parental choice education savings account, which is House Bill three eighty-nine. This is huge, which would basically give parents ninety percent of the SOQ per pupil funding. And one, of course, that's unconstitutional, the bill would require special education funding go to parents, but then there would be no requirement for the student to be eligible for special ed. It would have a substantially greater fiscal impact on local education. The bill, which is, this is crazy, the bill would allow parents to set us out up to two thousand dollars annually for college tuition, which that is something that public school children are not entitled to. This places the burden on administering this voucher program on local school boards without any funding to do so. So this is kind of the, our, the talking points, but I have given you a copy of the VSBA legislative update. If you go, and it would be Reverend Fleming and Mr. Bridgford, if you go to the VSBA website, you can keep up date because crossover is, is next week. And so there are a lot of bills, there were some that I wanted to talk, go over tonight, but it's ten minutes after eight. You can take these, read this and stay on the VSBA website and can keep up with it. So if you know your senators and delegates, please be in touch with them. And one other thing I wanted to just address is that, that was addressed there, is that in the, in the governor's budget, in the K-12 education budget, thirty-five point five percent is for K-12 education and twenty-one percent... point five percent is for K-12 education, and, uh, twenty-one percent is, of course, in the rainy day fund, uh, and then, uh, then the other is Medicaid, there's, you're gonna see a decrease in, in, in Medicaid funding, and, and, but his, his emphasis is really, um, in supporting, because he says you can't, if you don't have strong, a strong educational program, then you can't have workforce, I mean, your workforce is not gonna be competitive, and he's, and he cited that example in Northern Virginia, that there were over seventeen thousand, seventeen hundred, uh, jobs available, uh, for students, for people who have cybersecurity, and so we need to be looking at changing our curriculum, and, and you're going to see a lot of information coming out about how we're going to redesign the high school. So, the other last thing is, mark your calendar for April the twelfth, uh, this is going to be the tidewater VSBA regional meeting, and it's going to be held at Kellum High School, and, um, just mark your calendars for that, and, uh.
Is that in the evening like it was?
It's in the evening, and we've gotta make sure the art, we get the art, our art there on time, and, um, but you're gonna get, you're gonna get that from, uh, Rodney Jordan, because he is the, he's our president of the VSBA, so it will be April the twelfth, mark your calendar, Virginia Beach, at Kellum High School, and, um. Yeah, we normally have dinner at five, but all that information is coming out. We're gonna carpool? That's good.
'Cause that's the VSBA, we'll be just.
Yeah. Right. Yeah, it's, it's coming back from, you know, that's, it's coming back Tuesday, and, well, no, it's, yeah.
Is that Tuesday?
Yeah, the twelfth is a Tuesday.
Yeah.
They don't usually schedule them.
They need to reschedule that.
I don't even think anybody thought of that.
Last day is the national?
It's nine through eleven, isn't it?
Yeah.
Those going are not coming back until the twelve.
Twelve.
Maybe they.
Maybe they made a mistake.
No? But that's the date that they, um, selected, but I'll, I'll get in contact with Reverend Jordan. Why don't you go ahead and do it? No, no, you go ahead and talk with Gina and, and let her know of the, the conflict, and I don't know how many in our, in our, in our, in our regionals will be going to.
I doubt if it's changed, 'cause everything's set up, so I don't.
Yeah. So. All right, that ends board reports. Are there any subcommittee reports? Yes?
Just per the board's request, we, um, I did meet with, um, Mr. Steele and Mr. Lilly, um, in reference to the transportation policy.
Right, thank you.
And, um, they're now, uh, having HR verify the policy to make sure that it's verified for all, and I also asked them to make sure that we have, uh, accountability requirements in their four bus drivers as well, uh, to make sure they're fulfilling their duties, and so we'll have a, a full report, uh, once everything is verified, uh, by HR to let everyone know, um, how everything is going.
Good, good. And one of the things that I, I talked with Dr. Bracy, and I'm glad, part of the, um, the subcommittee reports, um, and I, and I, in talking with Dr. Bracy, I'm not trying to usurp his authority as superintendent, because of course, any issue that comes up automatically goes to superintendent, but what I wanted to do is to, so that we all understand, the purpose of the subcommittee reports is that we are work, we are working with the superintendent as a team, and, um, there's research that you, your, your particular committee can be, uh, doing, um, on each committee, and then there, there's staff people that you can be working with, so basically the subcommittees can be working in conjunction as a team and supporting the superintendent, but in no way, and I wanted him to know that, and I wanted you to know that, in no way are we trying to usurp his responsibility, because everything goes to the superintendent anyway, so what we're trying to do is to make sure we're working as a team and, and, um, and being part of, being part of the process, so. If there are no other subcommittee reports, um, oh, we have three point sixteen.
For your transaction?
We've got, we've got one more item. It's three point fifteen, um, special employee transaction report, roll call vote.
Need for approval?
May, second, any discussion? Any discussion? Madam Clerk?
Mr. Bridge. Reverend Fleming?
Yes.
Mr. Heinz?
Yes.
Mr. Lamb?
Yes.
Mr. Lamb? Reverend Patello?
Yes.
Mrs. Williams?
Yes.
Mr. Parent?
Yes.
It's unanimous.
If there is no more business to come before this meeting, I move the floor to the room.